Good to go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of numbers.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Herzog.
Here.
Mayor McFetris.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
One abstention, two abstentions. Uh, motion carries. Okay, I would like a motion to go out of the regular meeting, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and may I have a motion to go into the public hearing?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we're in a public hearing for the rehabilitation of the former elementary school at one forty Elm Street. This is part of the application process for the Restore New York grant that's being compiled right now. Paul Valakett is here, he's the owner of the property. We don't have anyone else from the public. But Paul, do you, uh, do you want to address the board in any part of this, or you don't have to, but...
I, I didn't hope there'd be any questions that I might go answer, but...
Does the board have any questions about the process? Uh, the application is due May twenty second, I believe. On our, on our end, it's moving right along, we have a lot of letters of support, on your end?
I met with, um, Ray Carter yesterday, and he'll have a budget by the end of the week.
Great.
And, uh, I talked to Alex about helping with the program, and he said, take care of that for me.
Okay.
I'll meet with him probably Monday next week and finish it off. Just come on up quick.
There it is, yeah, all right. Well, we're all hoping for the best.
Yes.
How long's that process take?
The process to find out how, if, if we're awarded the grant?
Yeah.
I think it's in the fall. Do you know? Do you know how that, how the timeline works?
They, they got back pretty quick already on it, I didn't think it was gonna take that long.
I, I don't, I don't know, because of course, it's across the state where all of these applications are due, so...
I don't, I don't either.
I don't know either. Well, fingers crossed. That'd be really awesome for the community and for you.
Pretty good, good stepping stone to getting that done. But getting it started and everything, you know, finishing up would be, would be, we need the help.
Yeah, it's a great piece of property. All right, since no one from the public is here, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Now I need a motion to go back into the regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries, we're back in the regular session. So as I said, Paul, you can stay if you want, or you, you can go, it's completely up to you. We'll just, we're just gonna proceed with our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm just, uh, you know, I'm gonna try, try to help if, if I should've been here, you know?
No, no, I think that's great that you came.
No, thank you for coming.
Yeah, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your help up to this point.
You're welcome, very welcome.
I need all the help I can get.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks so much.
Those are all right.
We'll take care of them after, yeah, they're fine.
Okay.
No problem.
Yeah, good man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you soon. Uh, presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here tonight, we will continue, a report from the code enforcement officer. I don't know if you have any questions on his report.
Was this one that was from last month, or...
Did I get, okay, so we have to go to copy the...
I have April.
You have April, okay, it's the April one.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right.
All right.
I didn't know if it was the one that we didn't get from the previous month, or the one, the current one, okay?
Yeah, so it's the April twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone has any questions, do you want me to take back to Chris? He is always busy. Nothing? Okay. Here's my report. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees May meeting. As my focus is always on safety, health, affordability, and quality of life, we are continuing to make improvements to the waterline mains, which will mean fewer breaks and boil water orders. The Elm Street section is nearly completed and the South Street area, um, has begun. Main Street will follow. This is a long but necessary process. We thank you for your patience. We will also be replacing several sections of sidewalk. I know that many sidewalks are in need of repair. We will begin on Main Street downtown because we've got a grant for that part. And speaking of downtown, I would like to welcome two new shops to the village, located where Central Nutrition was previously. Vinyl Destination is selling and buying records, and Champlain Village Arts will be offering lessons and producing art. This means that we have four new businesses in the village. I encourage you to support them and spread the word. When it comes to improving the quality of life, we are also actively bringing events for people to gather, explore, play, and learn. There is an art coalition which has been formed to share art as well as bring public art to the village. Last week, a plant swap and talk took place, which will be a continuing opportunity to trade plants and share information. In June, there will be a program on insects, common and uncommon, at the Champlain Meeting House. Don't forget that we have a farmer's market in July, a community garden, a kayak rack next to the boat launch, several concerts scheduled in Biltborough Park, a recreation trail, a wonderful library, a disc golf course, hushoe pits, and so much more. I'm always open to hearing new ideas for activities that you would like to have available, or any concerns that you may have. A brief reminder that campfires are still not permitted in the village. We will be discussing that topic later in this meeting. May you all enjoy these spring days. A report from the trustees, and Joel, you wanna start?
Sure, I've got nothing to report.
Okay.
I'll make it easy.
Okay, Chuck?
Just, uh, it's nice to see that our new fire station had their groundbreaking today, and, uh, that's gonna be exciting. Hopefully, it's gonna be a quick process and gets done in a timely fashion. Sometime, I'm sure, next year, we should see a new station.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
It was a nice, nice groundbreaking ceremony and nicely attended. That's about all I have. And, oh yeah, thank you to all the fire commissioners, all their hard work that they, they did to get this process going.
Yeah, it's been a, a long time, and they've done great work on this, and we know how hard it is to work on some of these applications and grants, and, yeah, so kudos to them. And to organizing that ceremony, which was just wonderful today. Um, Nikki?
Uh, I don't have much. I'd like to say thank you to those who stopped by and helped you with the tree planting, 'cause I couldn't make it. So, uh, I had a few kids that did stop by that morning, and we put together a little, um, uh, like a greenhouse garden type thing, just in a little pot, so they, um, put together a picture. We laminated it, so it looks like a house and the sun behind the, uh, the seeds that'll grow. There'll be chives, so like grass in front of the house, so it's really cute. And there were new people that came by, so that was nice to see, the fresh faces, and they're excited for anything else that we have coming along. So I mentioned Village Fest, I mentioned the Christmas activity, so they're looking forward to that. The play was well attended, it was a long weekend. But it was a great show. The kids were great.
Oh, they were so good.
They were good, huh? They had fun, they really enjoyed it, and I, I know I've been singing those songs for weeks in the middle of the night, wake up. But it was, it was a good experience, I really enjoyed the, the crew. I, let's see. I am going to be working on some summer programming for the library, so once I have that information, I will share it, hopefully next month they'll have some idea of how many events, maybe once or twice a week, for, for kids' activities over summer. And that's pretty much it for now.
Okay, great, thank you. Kim?
So I have received the tax rule, so I'll begin working on the EDU report. The water board met last week. Just to catch up on things, we, we don't have a real reason to meet quite as often through the year. It's more of a crunch time thing. So once we get the final reports at the beginning of June, first week or two of June, then we'll start doing, you know, the, the raw cost of water and, and doing all the things that will go into that report, so then it'll be a, then it will be a very busy time, so. Other than that, I just have a question for Mike. Mike, um, any idea, I know your crew is super busy, but can we get the kayak launch in this year?
Possibly, it's missing parts, gotta look at it, there's parts that, uh, kid's butt broke it off, there's parts missing, a lot to see.
Yeah.
Once the water goes down, a lot to see.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's a shame, we got a grant for that, we s- we ended up spending quite a bit of money for that. It's a shame not to be using it.
Mike, is it just the, is it just the launch part where the kayak sets, or was it the whole platform that got damaged?
I don't remember, we're gonna have to, well, have to take it out, and, uh, 'cause that got stored away, we haven't put it out. I think it's still, it's still with the docks there on that side.
Okay.
So I'll have to, um...
Okay, I just wasn't sure which...
I don't remember, um, they didn't put it in last year.
Right.
So it's been two years, I don't remember.
Okay.
I know the kids had broke it, and there were pieces missing, some pieces we got out of the bottom, but I don't remember.
Okay, okay.
We don't seem to have as much of a vandalism problem.
No, we do not have much of one.
Maybe it'll survive.
Mike?
Yes.
But it, I know a lot of people use it, I'm anxious to use it, I, I have kayaks before.
Wait, the water's...
Yeah, the water's too high right now.
We can't put it in, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but when, when it recedes and, and if there's parts that need to be ordered for it, I can maybe get back in touch with the company that we got it from.
I don't remember what was missing, but there was some stuff that was missing. I'll have to look at it, but we'll have to wait till that water goes down, the currents goes down, just, you better float it out and true those things, and it's all the rocks and the bottom, we usually have a struggle with that.
I just wanna get it on the radar.
Okay. Anything else?
The dedication to the new fire station was awesome today, what a nice turnout of the community as well as, as everyone, all the officials that were there, um, from, from the board of commissioners to Mike Day and, um, not Mike Day, Eric Day and...
Oh, Eric Day, Wally Day.
Eric.
Oh, Eric and Wally. Yeah, Wally was a Charlotte guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eric Day and, and Kelly Donahue, um, just really, really nice.
Yeah, bless.
Will be anxious to see that building.
Yeah, yeah, it's very exciting. Okay, let's see, report from clerk treasurer.
Everyone has their expense and revenue reports for April, I think it's pretty close. We do have some excess money in general, but we have no money coming in for the next month, so, um, water is pretty close, and we already know that we've used fund balances here.
Mm-hmm, right. Does anyone have any questions on that part?
Um, I had questions earlier, I sat down with Juan today for a while and went through some things, and all in all, doesn't look too bad as far as especially or general.
Right.
We're in pretty, pretty good shape with our general, not set water source story.
Yeah.
We also lost a month's revenue too this year, because when we started, they were going.
Yeah.
So...
But I can, I can tell you, on our side of it, trying to do that report, it's, it's a lot better for us, it's a lot better for us trying to do it.
Okay. Um, and there are some transfers, need to do the transfers first, right?
Sure. Okay, so we have transfer from A fourteen ten point four Public Health, oh, two, A, A fourteen ten point four Public Health, a hundred and forty dollars from A nine sixty point eight Hospital and Medical Insurance, a hundred and forty dollars to A fourteen ninety point two Public Works Administration, sixteen hundred, from A fifty one ten point four Streets Contractual to A fifty one ten point one Streets Personal Services, five thousand six hundred dollars, from A fifty one forty two point one Snow Removal Personal Services. I did that because we had excess in snow, we didn't have a bad winter, and I know we're gonna use it in the street budget. A fifty one ten point two Streets Equipment, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars from A fifty one ten point four Streets Contractual, sixteen fifty, to A ninety fifty point eight Unemployment Insurance, five hundred, from A nine sixty point eight Hospital Medical Insurance, five hundred, to F ninety fifty point eight Unemployment Insurance, two hundred, from F nine sixty point eight Hospital and Medical Insurance, two hundred, to G eighty one ten point four Sewer Administration Contractual, fifty five hundred, from G eighty one eighty nine point one Other Sanitary Personal, Personal, five thousand five hundred dollars to G eight eighty one thirty point four Sewer Treatment and Disposal, four hundred dollars, from G eighty one twenty point four Sanitary Service Contractual to ninety fifty point eight Unemployment Insurance, three hundred, from G ninety sixty point eight Hospital and Medical Insurance, three hundred.
Um, we have a motion to approve this, these transfers?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions about any of these particular ones? No questions? All right, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetris.
Aye.
Do you wanna do the others as well?
We might as well on this page.
Um, the other transfers are for the main waterline replacement project. Fiscal advisors, five thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Premier Printing, two thousand fifteen dollars. And Oric Harrington and Supcliff, five thousand eight hundred and five dollars, for a total of thirteen thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. This was just the bond work.
Yeah. Um, may I have a motion to approve these expenses with the work, with the waterline project? And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetris.
Aye. It's not cheap. No. Nope.
For the warrant, we have additional invoices of five thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents, for a total warrant of twenty-seven thousand seven ninety-seven fifty, twenty-seven five, yeah, five ninety-seven fifty, thought I said it wrong.
I have a motion to, uh, pay the warrant with these invoices added.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? No questions? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetris.
Aye. Thanks, Juanita, for all the good work on all these numbers.
We'll wait till the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, report from the superintendent, Mike Hanadas report to us.
So it's been, uh, it's definitely been busy, we've had, uh, we had three water breaks in like five days. One of them was on Elm Street. I ended up not repairing it because two days after, we were putting, uh, we were putting a new line, a new line in there, so I ended up having to run, um, temporary PEX lines above ground to three houses on each side of the road. And they are still on those temporary PEX lines. We also had two here in Main Street, just up from our office, and that's another area that's gonna be replaced. Those we have to fix, we had no choice in those. As far as the waterline goes, Elm Street is complete. Pressure testing was done, super chlorination was done. Both this, uh, bacterial sta- bacteria samples, or both water samples have been, been in to analyze. I may have results tonight, as soon as I get the results, I have paperwork to fill out. Send to the health department, they'll release it, and then we can turn those lines, we can turn that new line on, I can get rid of the PEXs, put to the houses, and that will be on a brand new, a brand new system there. They got a little bit left to do, they gotta raise the hydrant up, they got an extension order, and, but they, um, they did a decent job there, they cleaned up the reactor, uh, tried to do topsoil and seeding and mulching and trying to, uh, we're having a better experience than the last one, let's just say.
That's for sure.
They're a lot easier to work with, for sure. It's been, uh, I've been spending quite a bit of time with them, trying to oversee, um, what's going in the ground, making sure it's, uh, done to the, to our standards, let's say, um, to make sure, I mean, it's, it's the village's, uh, infrastructure, we just, we don't want the same thing as we had last time, where you're, you're chasing and you're, so we've been spending quite a bit of time, it's a lot of coordination, you know, who you're shutting off, uh, if we have issues, you know, how we've been doing the tie-ins, kinda trying to communicate with the people, like, for instance, we started South Street today, that was all day just getting, uh, a T in, a cross in, and getting, getting it started. Now we can start working up South Street, they're just, actually, they're still out there now backfilling the intersection, but there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of communication, 'cause when we shut that street, I gotta shut Price Shopper, and that's, uh, I mean, that's huge. I can, three to four days every time we do boil water, so if I can, the minimal boil waters we have to do for, like, those businesses is huge, so. And also taking pictures and shooting GPS points, so we have, we'll have it all for our mapping, uh, we can take a little picture, so. It's a, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, it's gonna take a little while, but once it's in the ground, you can't, now's the time to do it, 'cause once it's in the ground, you can't see it, so. So it's been, uh, it's been definitely, it'll be, it'll be a busy summer for sure. We had a couple water meters that changed out that froze previously. People came to put their water on, and they must've had the water still in them. We had to swap out a couple PRBs that had, uh, had failed, had to replace. On the sewer side, the UV was signed off, that's been in service, that's been working. Our clarifiers, there was a bunch of, um, components that they had put jumper wires on, the company did come back last Monday, and that's taken care of, now they put the right, excuse me, the right components in, so that's up and going. The contractors still have to finish a punch list, a bunch of items, we got a clar- we got a chemical feed line, there's a bunch of stuff that they still have to, uh, to finish up, clean up. And then, uh, still got paving down there, so I would've thought they'd been here by now, but they're, um, I haven't seen them, so. Equipment, the one ton I gotta send, as soon as we get a chance, I gotta send that to the shop, we got a power steering line leaking, we got the line, we just gotta get it put in. Peterbilt, still have to send that, we got a few repairs need to be done, so we can get that inspected. Streets, we started sweeping, we still have a few, we got a few streets left to sweep, it was nowhere near as bad this year, 'cause we didn't use as much sand as, uh, as previous years, um, but that, uh, I gotta, I wanna get that, uh, get that finished up. Brush pickup, still ongoing for the rest of this month, at the end of the month, that'll be it, we won't be taking any more brush. Uh, the wastewater plant, the new door was installed, we had to prove it on, it might've been two months ago, it took a while to, to get here, but that's been installed, so we do have a new door now at the, at the wastewater plant. We've got to raise the, raise garden beds, I hadn't had those guys, I asked them to take them out today, and I told them, I'd like them, maybe put them in that corner, but I'll see where you wanna put them.
Sure.
I'd like to put a couple lines and be able to, once we get them set, then we can put soil on them, but I wanna get them set where they gotta go prior to, prior to, uh, getting soiling to them. Flower barrels have been delivered, so as soon as the flowers are planted, uh, we'll, we'll get those out. Still working on our lead and copper service line inventory, that's coming due in October. Other than that, it's, uh, it's been busy. I know we gotta look at getting our banners and stuff up, and, um, we, um, we leave our bucket truck that fixed today, so...
Oh, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, we were able to, we were able to...
Robert said he was working on it.
Yeah, part of the day, but he's, I think we've got it now, I have it run it this afternoon, and seems to be all right, so.
Good.
But other than that, um, I don't have much else, and I don't know, Kim, I don't know, I know you're, work you on the water board, and I, I need to get a monthly, I need monthly what is drawn off the hydrants, I know I've asked...
In the town.
I just...
I asked the last couple times, and I'm still, I haven't got anything in since last year, and there's been, all in between has been drawing, and there's no way, if they can give it to us monthly, and weekly, would be better, 'cause we, we track it every day. We get a high, then all of a sudden we're looking for leaks, but monthly for sure.
Okay.
And then we can, um, I gotta have a way to capture that water, I mean, we, we're capturing, we put one meter into the sewer plant, we're, we're writing down what's at the water plant, I mean, here, so it's hard when you can't, and it's, I don't know how, however they gotta do it, my suggestion, I think they had taken it, just put a book in the truck, fill the truck, write it down, write the date and where they took it from.
That's what they, that's what they have, and, um, I just got, the report, Alan had given it to Tom, and Tom scanned it and sent it to me.
So if they can do that monthly, that'd be, because I haven't, I think it's been, how long, when's the last time you got one? A year?
I think I remember that, it's been a while.
A year, December or something, like fifteen months ago, and I know there's been drawing in between, I mean, you see it, but...
I know the one that I have, um, that I received tonight goes back to March, and I know that I have some...
Last March?
No.
Oh, like, month ago?
This March, but I did have some from previously, I believe.
Oh, see, I didn't get any, if they can email them even, whatever, to me or Robert, or we can put it with it, 'cause I think it's been like a year, I only received one, and I'm honestly, it was a year ago, December.
Well, I know we need it for the water.
Yeah.
The, the, the sheep, um...
Yeah, so, I have no way to
track that, I don't know, we don't...
Okay, we, we need to know too, or you need to know too, or Robert needs to know also.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, we track it daily, so...
It would be sent to just both of you easily, you know, Kim.
Yeah, just email it, just, if they can email it, I don't know how they do it, however they gotta do it, if they can turn it into even Tom, they have...
They write it, they, they write it down in a notebook?
Yeah. Probably, probably to fill in the...
And they take a photocopy of it, and, and I usually have to write over the numbers, because it's usually pretty faint.
Uh, but yeah, if we can, because there's no way for me to capture
Right.
that, and it's, um...
Yeah, and I need the information as well for that spreadsheet that Mary does.
Yeah.
So, um, and then...
I mean, what we draw, we draw from the wastewater plant, it all goes through the meter.
Mm-hmm.
So it's metered. That's what we fill, but, uh, either they're gonna have to buy a meter and put it in the hydrants, I don't know what, how else, I don't know how else to, to do this, but it's been, I know it's been a while, we, we just, we need that information.
Okay.
Monthly is definitely better, for sure.
So what I'll do is, I'll go back and...
Yeah, whatever you have.
And see what my previous ones were, and I can send that all to you.
Okay.
Um, because like I said, it's just a, it's just a notebook.
'Cause that'll change. Yeah.
So I'll send that...
It'd be nice if they could put how much, the date, and probably where they drew it from, so we have an idea of, most of the time, they get it from River Street, but...
Is it just the date now, Kim? Or...
Little shit of them, the amount.
Yeah, let me, let me just...
I mean, I'm assuming their truck is, I don't know if it's three thousand gallons or what, but if they got the truck, they don't, it's three thousand gallons.
So they've got the dates when they drew, the gallons, and, um, this all says under location, it's all from the sewer plant on River Street.
River Street, they dropped the hydrant, 'cause I think the other day they drew four loads, they were drawn in December, they were drawn, I mean, I'm, I got them all on camera, but I didn't go sit down and go through all the footage, see how many tanks they drew, I should.
Okay, so, so I'll go, I'll go back and look.
Yeah, if you can, sure, yeah.
So sent, and when I get it, send it to you and to Robert?
Yeah, you've got Robert's.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And send it to me at the same time?
If Michael sent it to me, I don't know.
Yes, well, you were gonna be getting it tomorrow when I, when I got on the computer, but yes.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, I mean, it's gonna be... Yeah, I don't know, it's, I mean, it's gonna be. Troll somehow, I mean, I.
Yeah.
Just not knowing, because it looks like it's all leaking in the ground, which it's not.
Right, 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 and like I said, this, this is from, I think March eighteenth is what is on this page.
Well, there was some gone way back in December even, that never.
So I'll have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, easy to forward though.
If you could, I appreciate it, it's easier to track, because we do it daily, I know every day exactly how much we pull.
No problem. Yeah.
It's high, you know, when we're looking, and what's going on, we find out, you know, that, well, they're drawing. Four tanks, it's twelve thousand gallons and that's why we were high, we didn't know it, so we're looking for a leak, it's not even, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Right. Mm-hmm. Um. Do they always draw from the same hydrant?
I don't know.
Okay.
They have been drawn on River Street, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know where they draw them, I mean.
As far, as far as I know, I think the other ones that I've gotten, digging back into the memory here, but I think it was all from on River Street. But is there, so when you say, when you draw, it's.
We draw right from the sewer plant, we got a meter, we got a hose at the sewer plant. Hooked right up and it goes through our meter, so it's right there, it shows exactly how much went through that meter, so it's all metered.
Would it? Would it be easier if they did it that way, or is this just a convenience when they?
Yeah, it would. It, it would be, but if they're, say they're sweeping and they're out somewhere else, they may draw. By the golf course or somewhere, though, and I, I mean, that's not here, I don't use to, sometimes I, someone used to draw by Biermar, but that's a terrible place.
Right. Mm-hmm, right. Mm-hmm.
Because it serves up, serves up the line over there, we don't wanna cause issues on, over on that side, but.
I haven't seen anything up there. Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if, best places are like, if they are farther away like Haver or somewhere, because it helps move water.
Yeah, that's true.
Mm-hmm.
On, just need to know how much, date, and if they, if they can put a location, it'd be great.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so what I'll try to do is get it on, get it on my radar to do maybe around the first of the month, send out an email.
Yeah, well, we, we, see, when we do our readings, it's the nineteenth. So we do all our readings on the nineteenth, that's when we do our regular readings, I think that's what we use for cutoff too, right, for our monthly? It's the nineteenth of the month, isn't it?
Well, that's when we do the readings, yeah, yeah.
Right, so. Um.
Would that be better for you, if I got that from him around that time period?
To do it in the month.
Okay, it's the end of the month, we can go back, we can see what days, because usually we do, I think we do all our readings is the nineteenth, or about nineteen, they call this Sunday, it's the twentieth.
Right, yeah, just so we have time to, yes.
Okay.
Um, but if she sent it at the end of the month, it's only ten days past, and we can add that on.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
Yeah, because we'll have the date, so we'll know if it's before the nineteenth, sure.
Yeah, it does have the dates on it.
That would help a lot.
Okay, I'll go back and see if I, what did I have previously.
All right, I don't know if there's any other questions.
So does anyone else have questions for Mike?
I, oh, the other thing is too, I did order a while ago, and I gotta, I don't know what's taking so long, but all the piping, all the radiator piping for the sewer plant. Still haven't, it was going out to Milwaukee or wherever, and I still haven't got the confirmation yet that they've sent it, they had to build it.
Hmm.
So I gotta follow up on that and try to find out, because all those tanks, that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Got six tanks to get a vacuum truck here and empty, I don't know what we're gonna do, we need a vacuum truck to do that valve.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I just ask you one question, what about the, the panel at the main list station?
Sure. Still do that too?
You still have any quotes?
Yeah, I do, but I gotta figure out which way to go, because we've got two ways to go. There's two separate quotes there, one is for, we gotta change the piping, we gotta change the piping in the tanks, because they're so. Worn out that they're leaking by, and then the other part of that is we need a new panel, so the panel, I'm trying to. Decide which way to go, if we go with what we have for the water and sewer, we can view that panel. On our, we, we can do the panel online, so if we have an issue with shuts down, we can see that, where the other one. You really don't know, it would be just a call out dialer, so we're just trying to decide which way to go, I should have something by the next meeting. But we, we definitely have to change the piping there as well, so, we don't really have a choice, the piping we're gonna put will fit. Multiple pumps, it won't just fit like we had, we could only use their flight brand pump, and that was an issue because.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was a six month lead time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we switched to a pump that was less money, and it been decent, so we come out of Texas, the lead time's way shorter. So hopefully by next, the next meeting here, I'll have everything for that.
Okay.
This, I know it's expensive.
Yeah, it is, but.
Wait. Like a hundred and fifty thousand makes sense.
Don't wait till something happens. Yeah, we'll, we'll just have to figure it out.
Yeah.
There is money in reserves for repairs.
Yes.
Yeah, the biggest thing is when we do it, it's gotta be coordinated, because it's, you gotta have bypass pumping. So you gotta have a big six inch gas pump here, because that's gotta be, you can't use that tank and they're in there doing that, it's all gonna be piped around. But I, I gotta try and get things lined up, so it can all be done at one time and you don't have to.
Mm-hmm.
Print that equipment multiple times, that's the, that's the.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Coordinate it, because you get two separate people doing it, you gotta kind of coordinate together, and that's where, so.
Yeah.
It's tricky.
Yeah. We've had the check valves to put in, we already have all those, we just gotta get them in, we can do that at the same time, yeah, so.
Well, you never get bored with this job.
No, there's, there's always enough, there's always enough to do.
Yeah, and more, and more.
Yeah.
Well, keep up the good work and tell, tell the guys that too.
We're trying. And now we're in grass season, so that's, it's a little, it's growing wicked right now.
Yeah, especially with all the rain we've had.
It's hard to get it cut in between and.
Yeah.
Stays wet.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Okay, thanks Mike. Uh, correspondence? We, it's our CHIPS funding balances. All we have, that's all we have, okay. New business, all right, the dog law. So I know we've been talking about this for a long time. The, the document that I gave you is a combination of. The Village of Champlain Dog Law that was adopted in nineteen eighty-four. With added sections from the Town of Champlain New Dog Law. I kept the parts that were, were appropriate and in the town, so we didn't need to throw out everything that we already had. And inserted some parts that needed to be in there, so this is a draft, certainly open to suggestions. Um, I think it, it really is much stricter, less vague, I would say, than what we had before. Things like the, the length of a leash. It's got a bigger section on prohibited acts. There are two places where I reference the Town of Champlain, and, and for the public who may be listening, because the Town of Champlain employs the dog control officer. Which also works in the village, we need to make sure that we're, we're coordinated. But the, the fees and the penalties and the seizure of the dogs all go through the town. So for example, on section forty-seven dash four under seizure, section D. I wrote, the Village of Champlain will follow the impoundment fees as set by the Town of Champlain. And then I did the same thing in the next section A, where we're talking about violations of any provisions of this article. As established by the Town of Champlain Dog Law. Because we don't, we don't collect those fees and we don't register dogs, and I didn't want all of that to be in our law, because that's really in the town law. Joel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, how many pages was that?
Uh, it's, it's two, did I, I ran it back, I think.
Okay, I'll do that, okay.
My, I, I have the original, so mine is just separate.
Okay, I see what you're talking about, sorry.
Okay. So are there comments yet on this part? No, I, okay, so, so what I, what I didn't include at this point, because. We need to decide is whether or not, or how we're going to address the question of the tethering. So what I did for that is, I think I handed this out to you.
Yes.
I took, I took a very short law from Westchester County, New York. The Essex one, Essex County one that we saw before, I think it's very well done, but it's lengthy. And it's very complicated, and I wondered if we do want to include something with tethering, if we can't simplify it. So this was a simple one, and it's in New York State, so I did copy it just for us to discuss. It doesn't have to be done right now, I know you probably haven't had time to really look at it. But we need to decide whether or not we want something in our law about tethering, and then what we, how we want the wording to, to be, if we do.
My question on the tethering is. Has the county made a final decision on whether they're going to. To pass a tethering law, because if the, if the county is going to do a tethering law. Then there, it's a mute point for the villages and towns to do it, if the county is going to do it. Under an umbrella.
They haven't voted yet, I don't think they've narrowed that down, but they definitely haven't voted yet. I would say, I mean, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but it seems to me we do have laws in our code that are also covered probably by some county laws as well. I, but I, I don't think they've decided. And if we do include it, I, I, I really think it fits under, you know, one section of prohibited acts, I mean, I, I see it as being. A small section forty-seven dash three, if it were to be put in.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I mean.
I mean, it could be, it could be the definition of tethering, and it could be, I'm, I'm just making this up, I'm not proposing this, but it could be something like. Dogs cannot be tethered more than so many hours per day, or it. That's just, I don't see that it has to be a huge article if we do it.
I still have a lot of reservations on this tethering law. About enforcement, we can't, here's part of my problem, and I'm a dog lover, and my dog is cheated. Probably better than a lot of kids are. But with that being said, how are we going to get people. To file a complaint or turn something in where the dog control officer now is having a hard time? People wanna make a complaint, but when it comes down to, okay, you need to put your name on the dog's line. Well, I, I don't wanna do that, because I don't want my neighbor upset with me.
But I don't think that's a reason not to have a law.
Right, and I can't, I don't think you can worry about what, what they do or not wanna do, I think.
It's.
It's, it's, it's to protect the animals, I mean.
I, I understand that.
I mean, you can't worry about what people are gonna do. Either they do it or they don't do it, that's their choice.
How's it going to be enforced?
Just like anything else is.
Someone has to file the complaint. And the, and there have to be consequences. So I, I'm just, so we have three, in the county, we have, we have three villages. And I see villages as being very different than outside towns. We have a lot of pedestrians, we have sidewalks, we have lower speed limits, we have our houses close together. Sometimes we have one house behind another, we're so dense, you know, twelve hundred people in, what, one point five square miles or something like that? We're so, we're so dense, so now, if I take myself, I walk every day with my dog. There are certain houses where dogs are tied up, and I leave the sidewalk, I walk into the street, I cross the street, I walk past the house, and then I come back to the sidewalk. Because those, those dogs rush at me and the dog. I've had the, I've had their lead broken. They're, they look aggressive, they may be great dogs, but when they're barking, they're scary. And it's, it's, it's dangerous, and a lot of people tell me they're afraid to walk their dogs in this village, because of dogs that are tied out. For long periods of time, I tie my dog out to, for her to do her business for five minutes. But I just see villages as being different, just because we're so tight. So I don't know if anyone else has had that experience, but.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Yeah, I sympathize with what Kim's saying, because I remember when we had the discussion. Last time when the dog patrol officer was here, and we had the discussion, we're going back and forth with, you know. Is this gonna solve the problem of dogs being abused, things of that nature? I don't even know if you can answer that question, I'd say probably not. But I think what we can hopefully try and do is make the streets safer to walk and, you know, more appropriate to walk and more welcoming to walk. And yeah, I mean, I. These are, I think, are pretty reasonable. Restrictions on how you can leave your dog out, there's nothing that says they can't be tethered, just they can't be left. Sitting there all day without any supervision, if you're on the property and if you're outside, then that's perfectly fine, which is what it says there. I think this is reasonable, but that's just me, I don't know. It's hard, because it's like I, you know, are we trying to crack down on a small set of people, or are we just trying to crack down on the fact that, you know, we want. To be able to walk through the streets?
I think it's both, I think we're talking about safety, pedestrians and kids on bikes. Or adults on bikes, but the kids use the sidewalks to ride their bikes. And we're talking about dogs that are left outside for ten hours a day, all kinds of weather, I, I see it as both.
Yeah, and it also, you know, presumably we're following the, the laws, the local laws now, I mean, if someone does get bit or someone does get hurt, there are consequences for the dog that. You know. Resolve there, so I think it's. You know, probably beneficial to have. Some sort of state, safe restrictions for the dog. It's just tough, I'd almost like to. Find some way to just educate people on. Safe dog ownership and, you know, what other responsibilities are when you're picking up a dog or getting a dog.
Where, where do you wanna go with it, I mean, so Kim's expressed her views, and I, you know, I understand that, and maybe the county will pass something and make it easier for us. Um, I don't know.
Well, you can't resolve the issue if you do nothing.
Well. I mean, let's just think about it, like, like Kim was saying, like, you, for, for example, there's a place down the road, there's a dog that's, you know. Constantly barking, it's constantly chained out there, it's, there was an incident, something happened, nobody's there to say. How do we make a report, we call up the village, we call up, you know, Mary, how, how would it work, I'll run through it, you know, we're talking about enforcement, how are these things gonna be enforced?
Well.
Do we call the state police, do we call, you know?
No, that, no, the, the enforcement is the same as the enforcement of everything in here, which is all, all of it is actually very hard. Is you file, you go to the Town of Champlain website and you file the, the paperwork for a dog complaint. And then the officer follows up on it. And Kim is right, there are many people who say, well, I don't, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna have a problem with my neighbors. But when their kid is one, that the dog ran out and knocked him off his bike and he broke his arm. Then they're gonna follow up on it.
So I think it's reasonable, I think adding those restrictions to tethering. I mean, we can work it out of how we wanna word it or how, where it gets put in the list, but I think it's reasonable. At least it's on the books, so that, you know, in the event that the dog patrol officer is brought to something, then he has. You know, I, I think this is perfectly reasonable to say that, you know, this shouldn't be allowed, and if this is happening and you can show evidence for it and you can prove it, then. That's just me.
Well, I, I mean, I don't disagree with. You know, not having in our laws, I, I think we should have something, and. Like I said, if you don't have something there. There's no, nothing you can do about it.
Right. Right.
So, I don't see where it's an issue. Enforcement, yeah, well, it's gonna be any, not any different than enforcing any of the other things in here.
It doesn't say you can't put your dog out on a leash.
Oh, no, it's not an anti-tethering, no, but, uh, because I, I do tether my dog.
Right. I don't see anything wrong with this, I mean, it's all. Reasonable. Obvious.
Well, does someone wanna make a motion to move forward on drafting something, obviously, we're not gonna draft it now. Um, and then we'll pick it up, depending on what the vote is, we'll pick it up again next month?
We'll make a motion that we include in our dog. Uh. Law, that we include some form of tethering restrictions.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
More discussion? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So it passes in terms of drafting some language, alright. Um. Would someone like to work with me on that? Okay, alright. Alright, um, let's see here. Uh, recreational campfires, we've got the forms, the, uh, the rules and the form from previous years. I, um, I took the dates that we had last year and I just, um, changed them for this year, but that's not to say that those are the ones you want. So I wrote, we had May twentieth before, so I wrote May nineteenth, then I wrote ends October thirteenth, but if you'd like to change that, we can do that.
Okay, you did.
So, um, let's see, May nineteen.
Sunday.
Yeah, I know we tried to do that before Memorial Day.
Right.
And then October thirteenth, that would get us past, um, or to Columbus Day.
Yes, right, or, or we could do the fourteenth, if we wanna include Columbus Day.
Yeah, Columbus Day is the fourteenth.
Yeah.
That'd be probably better, right? Okay. Um, any other, any other part of this, these permits you'd like to update or edit?
So are we going back to filling out a whole? Because didn't we do something last year where it, we, if you already had one, you just said I wanted to renew it?
Yeah, I think Chris keeps them on file.
Okay. Okay, so, are you doing the same thing for people that have previously had one, or do you wanna everyone to fill out a new one?
No, I think we can use what, I think we can use the last of file, because, you know, they've been doing this, what, we've done this for five or six years now, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
If, if the area didn't change, if they didn't move where they put their permit, if it's in the same location.
Right, right. Yeah, if it's in the same location, right, if they're going to move like this, it needs to be looked at.
Right, and I think that was the stipulation, if nothing has changed with where you have it, then all you had to say was, or, or.
Yeah, right.
I think we had them still fill it out, because the dates have changed, the dates are changing.
I thought we still, okay, right. Yeah, I think I was, oh, I, I can't remember.
And you just, you just didn't have to.
Right, I agree now, it's the same.
Draw a diagram.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, I know that I had pulled some old ones. And got, when they told me that, yeah, I thought I had pulled a file of old ones that Chris had and just. Written, I mean, we can have everyone fill it out. I don't know, I, I don't have a problem.
I think, I re-signed, I signed a new one.
Did you say?
Yeah, I just signed it, it's not like I, yeah, redrew anything or.
Right, okay, so we can, what do you say, have everyone, have everyone sign a new one?
Just down.
I mean, yeah, at least that.
If they have to draw, yeah.
I usually insist they take the rules with them.
Yeah.
Just because they don't usually read those.
Right. What's your dates change?
And some of them are very specific.
Well, that's it, that's why the rules is the dates.
And you can always tell when somebody's burning things, they shouldn't be burning them.
Yeah, there's either black smoke or smells.
Yeah.
Or they're burning their witch over their house.
That too.
It's kind of, it's like a contract, with the dates on it, then you gotta still sign it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and I did, yeah, and I did.
A refresher.
Okay, so everyone can fill it out.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so may I have a motion to, uh. For this, the fire permit, the campfire permit?
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So you'll redo the dates on that?
Yeah, I'll redo the dates, yeah. Um, okay, for the park development, it's just a quick little update, we're talking about the, um, the new little park that we're eventually going to put in on the. Corner of, um, Cedar and Church. Um, you've probably seen, there are some piles of dirt there. Um, they're going to put some fill in and level it a bit and, uh. And maybe put a bench in, we decided not to put the tree in, it's not really ready. Uh, there are a couple of other issues that we're going to be working out with that location, so. Right now, we're at the leveling stage.
When we swept, we put our sleepings there, just to, I gotta put some dirt in there anyway, level it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Gotta bring it up to where it needs to be getting leveled before we put any trees or, or wanna bury them.
Right. Yeah. So I just wanted to update you quickly on that. Um, I do need a motion to go out of the regular session, please.
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries, and a motion to go into executive session.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Alright, um, could I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and a motion to go back into regular session?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Oh, I think they all seconded it, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that motion carries. Um, so, um, Mike, what we're gonna start with. For now, is, um, and I'll, I can notify Anthony tomorrow if you agree, is that, um. Twenty hours for at least the next two weeks. Oh, with, I don't know, how would you say this, with. We're making some changes to that policy, right?
With, with further, with further, um, review of the comp time policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is that right, Ward?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, is that okay with you?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you decide.
Okay.
Is that like an official decision?
That's an official decision, but I didn't know if I really needed a vote on it, or, I mean, it just was.
It's not an expenditure.
No, no, it's just a decision to.
Well, you don't have to do a roll call, but you have to do a motion to do something in a second.
Okay, well, we can have a motion then, could I have a motion to that effect?
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? Did you want verbiage on that, Mary?
No, I just, I'm starting with twenty hours for the next two weeks with further review of comp time policy.
Oh, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we just have a, I think, a couple of, uh, quick things here, um, the last meeting date for the fiscal year. Um, Mary, Juanita, you have a, a recommendation?
Um, next week and not till last week.
Yes, because we have a lot of stuff.
Cause we got a lot of stuff going on that last week.
Okay, so, um. Do you want it more towards the end of the week, or do you want it on Monday, or?
Sure, sure, no, that's fine.
Are you, were you planning on doing this in the evening?
I would, I would say so, because we have two people who are at work during the day.
But, or, it's, I mean, I, I can't say that it's gonna be a long meeting, because we're just gonna approve whatever bills we have and we have transfers, that's it.
Well.
Depends on the day.
Cause our last, we, we have no school on the twenty-third?
We have snow days, Bill.
We have snow days.
Oh, okay.
On the twenty-third, and I'm going out of town. Like later in the day, so.
I mean, you can do it during the day, it's fine.
I just didn't wanna leave anyone out that, um, unless you wanted to have it on one of those snow days, but are you leaving on the twenty-third?
Later in the day.
Okay.
That's why I was like, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come to a five o'clock meeting, because I plan on being somewhere else.
See, I have a, I have a meeting in Plasberg from eight to one on the twenty-third, so. That would be hard to do, could we do it as early as Monday or not, the twentieth, is that too soon? I mean, that's still a week and a half before the end of the, the month.
Just wait for my clothes and shoes.
Um.
When do you come back?
I will be back on Monday, Thursday.
When's the twenty-third?
Or the, the twenty-fourth, you're gone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be gone for the whole time.
What about like Wednesday, I mean, it just.
If, if it's in the evening, if we have a, a zoning board meeting at five.
And, and there's a comp, the comp plan meeting is also.
Oh.
And I can't come during the day, I, I have a field trip that day.
Is the twenty-eighth too late?
That's on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
You're off Monday, you're off Monday.
Well, we're off Monday and Tuesday is pending a doctor's appointment in Lake Placid.
Right.
For my, and payroll, and it, yeah, it's, that's just.
And the twenty-ninth is too late?
Too late.
Wednesday?
Well, I'd rather it be earlier, I mean, we can, but.
Oh, you can't do it?
Concert after.
We can do, I mean, we can.
Um. Well, maybe we're not.
No, sorry.
Gonna be able to get all five of us.
Twenty-ninth? No, twenty-ninth I can't, I have to go get James.
Yeah, the, the twenty-third, if you have a quorum and I'm not here for it.
Well, I can't really do the twenty-third.
No, I mean, if you did it at, at night and I'm not here, then, and.
Are you okay with that, I don't like to leave anyone out. So, does the twenty-third work for you, Joel? The Thursday, in, in the evening?
Say about six thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, fine.
Job.
Do it at four.
Okay.
I'm not, well, I guess, no, I, I can't, I can't do it at four. I have a second job. I'm right now, unless you wanna come meet at the coffee shop.
I, I just had to be funny and say. Anyway, okay.
Maybe twenty-third at six thirty.
They said it's twenty-third at six thirty.
Is that okay?
By twenty-three at six thirty.
Okay, so we have, so we have that.
I just feel it gives us a little bit of time to get some information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we have s- uh, some vacation rollover requests, I believe there are now three of them.
Now Steve is gonna have two days.
Okay, okay.
He won't get another day on the third, on the first, because that's when we start our new year.
Everybody gets their new stuff.
So, yeah.
Okay, so he would have two.
He has sick time off.
Yeah, sick time, that doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, that's different.
So Steve will have two days.
Juanita has four, Mike has eleven. Alright, let's get this on the table here, we have a motion to approve these, um, these holdovers. Someone? May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? Do you want me to call for a vote? Okay.
Are, are you gonna do like any, you know, like.
Used, used by.
By a certain time or whatever, I don't know.
Didn't we say it was by October something before or something?
It was October thirty-first.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, that's what I think it was too.
Okay, okay, just, just to.
Okay.
I mean, I won't have any problems with mine, but.
So, days must be used by October thirty-first?
Well, I, I wanna, I wanna wait a week in October, so.
Okay.
Days to be used by October thirty-first?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, any other old business? You have a motion to adjourn? Am I forgetting something?
No, you're not.
Okay, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thanks, everyone, I know it was a long meeting, but it was productive.